...dollars in council district nine park funds. I felt that it was important to devote this money to the restoration of this park because this park is here for the benefit of the entire city.
And Occupy LA protesters didn't waste any time returning to this park. In fact, as soon as the fences opened to the public, they were right back inside with their signs. Were you guys waiting for them to reopen the park?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
As a big contingency of police officers kept watch, protesters made themselves right at home. They held a yoga class and staged a small rally.
Whose park are parked?
Meantime, city officials are warning protesters to keep away from the new plants and to leave the park promptly when it closes at night, or they'll have to contend with police.
We enforce the law, and if it requires an arrest, we'll make an arrest. We much prefer to do warnings, but we'll make arrests when necessary.
The park will be open each day from 5:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m., and then that's when officers will lock it up. At City Hall, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The Department of Water and Power, Home Depot, and Scotts Miracle Grow also chipped in to help pay for the renovations. Like the saying goes, "It takes a village to raise a child," and recently, a village made up of parents, family members, and mentors from the OLA program gathered together to celebrate the achievements of dozens of college-bound high school graduates they helped along the way. These young adults are attending their second high school graduation ceremony at the recently renovated Lafayette Park. The first one was held at their respective high schools, of course, but this community graduation ceremony honors seniors who have also graduated from the Heart of Los Angeles, or OLA program.
Brown University, UC Berkeley, Cal State, Columbia University.
These are just a few of the universities these 53 college-bound high school seniors will be attending in the fall, and they owe no small thanks to OLA for helping them achieve their dreams. For more than two decades, OLA has been there for Los Angeles' inner-city youths, offering them free after-school programs in academics, athletics, and the arts.
It has been amazing. I have met a lot of individuals, and I've been exposed to many opportunities, including internships at law firms, an opportunity to go to a law camp in Washington, D.C., and also I met my mentor Jackie Greenberg, and she helped me apply to a lot of schools, and I've been able to get a lot of scholarships.
I've learned several things at OLA. OLA has become literally my second home. I've learned how to swim at OLA. I learned how to make my photography better. OLA has helped me raise my SAT scores.
In fact, Council President Herb Wesson, the OLA graduation keynote speaker, encouraged these recent grads to set their sights higher than they've ever imagined.
Barack Obama, African-American president. That means we can have a Latino president. That means we can have an Asian president. That means we can have a woman president.
Wearing ribbons around their necks that were hand-sewn by OLA parents, recent college graduates who are also OLA alums attended the ceremony, serving as role models to a younger generation of OLA kids. While many are the first in their families to graduate from high school and the first to go off to colleges, their younger brothers and sisters now have someone in the family to look up to. To learn about the OLA program, go to heartofla.org. And there are programs all over our city like OLA, whose goal is to help young people stay in school and beyond, and to do so, they need tools like computers. As Gil Reyes tells us, one such program recently got a much-needed boost when federal funding enabled them to open a new computer lab.
Now open in East Hollywood, a career source center and computer lab in one. City leaders hope students from nearby Bernstein High School will use it and use it often.
Finding a job, studying, doing your homework, this is an opportunity in an area that hasn't had a lot of technological resources to make sure through our stimulus money that all Americans have the chance to bridge that digital divide and to get the skills they need to succeed in our economy.
The Youth Policy Institute Computer Lab and Work Source Center is located on Santa Monica Boulevard, east of Gower. The computer section is funded by President Obama's Recovery Act, the career center funded by the City of L.A.'s Community Development Department. It aims to lure the area's high school dropouts.
There'll still be services for students who are in school, so many of you, we hope to see you in the program, but really focusing on students who have dropped out of the schools in Hollywood, getting them back in school, getting them on a career path, getting them into post-secondary education.
It's one-stop shopping for those still in school and others who may have fallen through the cracks. Most of them didn't have regular access to the internet until now. In East Hollywood, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The computers are available to the public seven days a week. And learning doesn't have to stop just because kids are on summer break. In fact, a new program is helping kids see the fun in learning by giving them passports to a successful summer of great activities that also challenge the mind. Anita Bennett reports. Instead of spending the summer months playing and watching TV, these children plan to continue the learning process.
I could go to museums free and go to the museum instead of being home and sitting there all day.
That free museum pass comes courtesy of a new program for L.A. USD students called Passport to Success.
We know for third graders, for sixth graders, everyone who does reading over the summer will do better in the coming year. Everyone who has support around them will do better in the coming year.
The program recently kicked off at Hoover Street Elementary. It's sponsored by a nonprofit called Families in Schools and Target Stores.
You deserve a quality education regardless of who you are or where you come from. That's why Target is giving money to schools to help you learn and have fun at the same time.
To get started, each student is given a special passport listing activities to accomplish over the summer months.
You have this passport, fill it up. I think the greatest thing would be to have comeback at the end of the summer, absolutely kicking it in your next school year, but you have all of the activities that you could have taken place in completely done.
It's something this little girl who led the flag salute plans to try.
What are you gonna do this summer?
We're gonna last cycle, get more smarter, more smart.
And she already has several books in mind. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The mayor's office, the Los Angeles Public Library, as well as the L.A. Convention Center are all sponsors in the Passport to Success program. Some activities for kids include free tours of Los Angeles City Hall, taking part in reading clubs at the city's various library branches, and free educational boat tours at the Port of Los Angeles. Two approved operators are now offering kayaking trips on the L.A. River. L.A.'s rail lines are extending their weekend operating hours, and an alleged slumlord is being sued by the city, but you may be surprised by who it is. These stories and more in City Beat. L.A. River enthusiasts are finally getting what they've long been asking for, to be able to kayak on the L.A. River. L.A. River Expeditions and the Conservation Corps recently announced several kayaking trips from late July to late September on the upper reach of the Los Angeles River in the San Fernando Valley. There had been limited tours as part of a pilot program. However, the tickets for the kayak tours quickly sold out due to an overwhelming response. Tours for school groups and underserved youths were set aside. To find out more, go to lareverexpeditions.com. And as the demand increases for more trains and longer operating hours, Metro has announced its rail lines will now operate into the early morning hours on weekends, beginning the last weekend in July. Riders on the red, blue, gold, purple, green, and expo lines will be able to catch a train every 20 minutes until 2:00 a.m. The orange line busway in the San Fernando Valley will operate until 2:40 a.m. Friday and Saturday nights. The City of L.A. went after Deutsche Bank last year for the same thing. Now it's going after U.S. Bank for allegedly letting about 174 closed homes become neighborhood eyesores. The city has filed a lawsuit alleging that in failing to maintain its properties throughout the city, U.S. Bank violated city building codes and subsequent abatement orders, as well as state laws. City Attorney Carmen Trutanich says the abandoned properties are a magnet for crime and drive up mortgage and insurance rates while driving down property values. Bank executives deny responsibility, saying U.S. Bank is just a trustee, and the true owner of the homes is an investment group. NBC Universal has dropped a proposal to build nearly 3,000 residential units on its famed backlot, opting instead in a revised plan recently released to add more production space and expand its Universal City theme park. The decision was hailed by County Supervisor Zev Yerslawski and L.A. City Councilman Tom Labange, who had opposed the idea of residential development on the Universal City landmark. Yerslawski and Labange say the plan will boost much-needed jobs for L.A.'s entertainment industry and boost tourism. It's one of the star attractions at L.A.'s Griffith Park, and it's free, but the Travel Town Train Museum wouldn't be able to run so smoothly without its volunteers. Now those volunteers are getting honored with the President's Volunteer Service Award. Anna Marcos takes us to the awards ceremony.
This year, dozens have hopped onboard the train at Travel Town Museum, the volunteer train, that is. Those committed to the volunteer cause are getting a special Presidential Volunteer Service Award, signed by the U.S. President himself.
Dante does whatever is needed. He gives tours.
To me, Travel Town is like a giant family, and I love trains.
But no matter what your love or your skill, there's always something you can do at this museum.
You can build track for us. You can give tours for us. You can work on diesel engines for us. You can help beautify the place and plant gardens and things like that.
These volunteers have committed at least 50 hours to the museum. Some have committed as much as 500 hours in one year.
I just like to work, and I live in Travel Town since I was a kid, so I might as well just spend my time here and work for them.
I think we're gonna have to have everybody raise their hand and say, "I'm gonna volunteer." Whether you're gonna volunteer for the armed forces, volunteer for the Conservation Corps, volunteer for teaching, Teach America, volunteer for Travel Town times 10, whatever it may be.
So it's all aboard. Here's a chance to take a spin on the volunteer circuit by hopping onto these railroad tracks. Just visit www traveltown.org. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Again, a visit to the Travel Town Museum is free. And in this week's list of things to do, a new exhibit at the Chinese-American Museum, a brand-new park right in the heart of downtown L.A., and learning all about the man whose name is synonymous with the Port of L.A. You're invited to the opening reception for Chinese-American Museum's new exhibit, Deconstructing Chinatown. The reception on Thursday, July 26th, is open to members from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., then to the general public from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. The event is free, but an RSVP is required. The exhibit features new and recent works by eight Los Angeles-based artists that help explore the complexities of and challenge preconceived notions about Los Angeles' Chinatown. The evening will also feature guest speakers, refreshments, and the debut of new exhibition catalogs. The Chinese-American Museum is located at 425 North Los Angeles Street at the El Pueblo Historical Monument. To RSVP, call 213-485-8567, or email RSVP@camla.org. The community is also invited to the Banning Museum for a lecture and book signing by author Tom Sitten at 10:00 a.m. Saturday, July 28. Sitten will be speaking on the role of pioneer Phineas Banning and his descendants in the rise of this region, based on his book Grand Ventures: The Banning Family and the Shaping of Southern California. He will primarily focus on the second generation and their ownership of Santa Catalina Island from 1892 to 1919. Admission to the event is free for friends of Banning Museum members and children under 12, and $5 for non-members. More info can also be found at thebanningmuseum.org. And there is now more open space for downtown dwellers with the grand opening of Grand Park on Saturday, July 28. Grand Park, located at 210 North Grand Avenue with a view of the Music Center and L.A. City Hall, will celebrate its inaugural weekend with a National Dance Day celebration from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Familiar faces from the hit Fox reality show So You Think You Can Dance will be on hand to teach fun and easy moves to anyone who wants to participate. You'll also get to enjoy a special performance by Iris from Cirque du Soleil. Other family-friendly events will also be taking place on Saturday as well as Sunday, July 29. Go to grandpark.lacounty.gov for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. My name is Herb Wesson. I'll be the presiding officer today. Today is Wednesday, July 25. The council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Public is welcome. We have several committee meetings that go on during the week. The public is welcome to those meetings as well. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but I'm going to ask Mr. Labange to start off with the presentation portion of today's meeting. Mr. Labange, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, thank you very much, and we have a very special group here that we wanted to call in with Mr. Alacone, who's chairman of the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee. Together, we are honoring Older Americans Month 2012. Now, schedules being what they are, May was Older Americans Month, but every day is Older Americans Day in the city of Los Angeles because we care about our seniors. A long tradition of caring about our seniors. And Helen Lee is here. Give Helen a big hand. Department of Aging, community liaison for all communities, especially the Asian community. Since 1963, communities across the nation have joined in their annual celebration...
Mr. Labange, wait a minute. Can we keep it down, please?
Thank you very much. To start all over again, for those younger people who were talking, us older guys were talking, younger guys over there. Okay, so Older Americans Month since 1963, under then the administration of John F. Kennedy, they initiated Older Americans Month. Every time May comes around, we salute our seniors with a proud tradition that shows the nation's commitment to celebrating the contribution and achievement of seniors. We know that people make a difference. All over this country, people make a difference, but in Los Angeles, people makes a difference. All over this country, people make a difference, but in Los Angeles, people makes a difference. And another older American I want to invite up here right now is Councilman Richard Alacón. Give Councilman Alacón, he's an older American. Get up here right now, Richard, Chairman of the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging. The theme of Older Americans Month is Never Too Old to Play. And the place in the spotlight is an important role for older adults to play in sharing experiences, wisdom, and understanding, and passing their knowledge to the generations. This past May, the senior artist created an amazing array of artwork which is displayed on the Henry P. Rio Bridge. And Mr. Zine, you know why it's the Henry P. Rio Bridge? You know who Henry P. was? Henry, he was a man who crossed the bridge for 55 years as an assistant city clerk. Let's give it to the memory of Henry P. Rio and that Bridge Gallery. Today, in council, we're here to honor all the artists, which we will do, but I'm going to ask my colleague and Chair of the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging Committee, Mr. Richard Alacón, to say a few words, as he too will tell you, the first thing you learned in Mayor Bradley's office was that one day we'll be on this committee as we go older. Did you learn that? All right. Richard Alacón, give him a big hand.
Tom learned that first, I want to make it clear.
That's true, that's true.
He is several months older than me, and we now both qualify for discounts at Denny's. So, it is obviously one of our pleasures to provide services to the senior center. In my district, we absolutely rely on the Pacoima Senior Center and the services of the network of services that are provided by the organizations that run the senior programs in the San Fernando Valley. They are vital. And when we go to these, and I know all of the council members do attend these various functions, we see seniors engaging in activities, we see them having events. We just did a celebration at the Pacoima Senior Center, which is named after Councilman Bernardi, who inspired that development, who, yes, who was a champion for senior services. And it's vital. But I also want us to remember that many of the services we provide are vital for the well-being of the senior citizens. Our food distribution program for seniors that are essentially locked in their homes is critical, and it speaks to the great needs that we have in our community to focus on issues related to seniors. And so while we are here to celebrate Older Americans Month, we are at the same time recommitting ourselves to upholding the services that we have rendered, particularly for those who find themselves in critical need. So with that, I want to thank Councilman Labange for inviting me to participate. I am now amongst the ranks of those that qualify for those discounts, and want to thank all of you for coming in. We appreciate the work that you do for us each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Helen, come over here for the Department of Aging. Helen has a special presentation here. Helen Lee.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Mrs. Song from ABC Printing Painting Art Class. She wants, she's the one, Mrs. Song, she wants to donate to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause.
Yes, okay. The year of 2012, our theme was Loving Los Angeles. So she painted Loving Los Angeles.
So everybody say, "Kamsamida."
Kamsamida.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members, thank you, and I want to also extend a thank you to one of your staff members who do special outreach for seniors, Alice Roth in my office, but I know we could name them all, but, Mr. President, thank you for giving us this moment.
Thank you, no. And everybody, let's give them one more round of applause. They do so much, they led the way for all of us.
Mrs. Kim also donated two candles she made to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
President, thank you.
Thank you very much. God bless Los Angeles City Hall, and God bless United States, and God bless Korea. We pray every day that this is my artwork. Thank you, everybody. Gamsanida.
Kamsamida, God bless everybody in between Los Angeles and Korea, that covers the world.
Thank you, thank you. And to you, Tae-dan-hi kamsamida. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum at this time. It would be appropriate to go through the agenda, so if you would please call the roll.
Very good, sir. Alacón, Buscayino, Englander, Garcetti, Weisler, Kareska, Coria, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Weston, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves, Mr. Englander seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Reyes seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to the agenda. Before getting into it, there is a request from member to continue item 12 to September 19. Again, item 12 to September 19. Further, the Office of Finance reports that item 15B should be received and filed, that's 15B.
Without objection.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 16 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have any cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 1, 6, 13, 14, and 16.
13, 14, and 16?
That is correct, sir.
Specials, members, any specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, that brings, thank you. Madam Clerk, that brings us to where?
Mr. President, items 17 through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, we are on items 17 through 27. Mr. Parks, special?
Could we hold 17 till the committee report is completed?
Okay, you want to hold 17, Mr. Parks. Members, any other specials? Okay, then let's open the roll, prepare to open the roll, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, items 28 through 33 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards on these items?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on 29, 30, and 33. Again, 29, 30, and 33.
Members, specials?
We're covering.
Any specials? Okay, on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 34 and 35. There are items scheduled for closed session, would you like to hold them on the desk?
Well, I know one of the items, is it Mr. City Attorney? Do we want to hold 34? Mr. Krikorian, so let's hold, I'll hold 34. On item 35, Mr. Krikorian, what do you recommend we do on that item, sir?
I'd like to hold that for closed session.
Okay, so we'll hold 35 as well. So, at this point in time, we've gone through the agenda. This is a very special day. A very special day. One of our members just turned 16 years old. Finally old enough to shave. But, and I'm not talking about Joey B., I'm talking about Mitch, Mitch Englander. Happy birthday, my dear friend. Mr. Buscayino.
All right, I'd like to bring to my mic, Mr. Garcetti, for Garcetti-Buscayino rendition of Happy Birthday.
This is scary.
Here we go, ready? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mitch.
Every dog in the city of L.A. is somewhere howling, howling right now.
I could.
Yes, you may.
I would say after that singing that they should keep their day job, but I've seen their day job, so, thank you, guys.
So you're finally old enough to vote, Mr. Englander. And since it's his birthday, we've got a special group of people that we want to honor today from the area that Mr. Englander represents. So, Mr. Englander, at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to you and your very, very special patriotically dressed guests.
Yes.
Great ties, ties for everybody.
This is truly a great birthday gift, the fact that they've come down here, and let me tell you, I've been working with these folks for many, many years on so many projects, and it's my birthday, but today's their anniversary. And we're a better place because of them. And so, today we are honoring the Kiwanis Club of Northridge on their anniversary, and we'll be recognizing and presenting certificates to all, but we've got some special ones, one for our president here, Jim Loftel, as well as Sharon Rose, our president-elect, and honoring the countless achievements and contributions the members of the Kiwanis Club of Northridge brings to us each and every day. They were founded on August 3rd, 1949, and have been an integral part of the fabric of our community ever since. There are 325,000 Kiwanis and 8,600 clubs worldwide, they're all on their way here to City Hall right now. Their mission statement is that they are an organization of volunteers who have joined together for service, fellowship, and patriotism, as you see by the ties that they wear often, sharing their talents in the community through their time and their financial means for the benefit of children and many others. It sounds pretty good until you start to look at all the individual projects and initiatives that they do each and every day, every year throughout the community. My office has worked closely with the Northridge Kiwanis on countless community projects, events, and activities, and that is because they are everywhere in our community, everywhere you turn, every day, they're doing charitable work, community beautification, community building projects, assisting those in need, and in all other ways, making Northridge, the San Fernando Valley, and the city of Los Angeles a better place to live, work, and raise a family. Some of the most notable achievements, these are just a few, include the annual American Flag Project, and get this, each and every year, they put out 400 flags in my district throughout Northridge on flagpoles, and they do this all on their own to celebrate Memorial Day through July 4th. Kiwanis have undertaken this patriotic community beautification project, they've done this for 15 years. This year, yes, that deserves absolute applause, this year, they had to rely on more unusual community support and donations because the flagpoles that they usually put up, all their materials were stolen. And so, actually be on the lookout, if you see another community putting out 400 flags, call me, and we'll go make the arrest. But they actually went out and they raised the money to go do it again, to replenish their supplies, to ensure that they can continue this tradition. This year, 12 club members were proudly joined by an Iraqi war veteran to raise the flags on May 26th. Every year, the Kiwana Santa Helpers Project provides holiday gifts to ensure that struggling families from Napa Street area are able to enjoy that time of year like so many of us do and take for granted. Every year, the Kiwana Thanksgiving Food Project assists families in the area to ensure that they give thanks and celebration and Thanksgiving with their families by donating dinners as well. The Kiwanis host the annual Los Angeles County Courageous Citizens Luncheon, by the way, that I've been able to attend every year, it's very unique. They partnered with the District Attorney's Office, and they've been doing it for many years, started with originally, I believe, Gil Garcetti, and have been now doing it with Steve Cooley, where they bring in just folks, ordinary citizens, that have really gone over and above the call for duty, and also working to recognize heroic district attorneys, folks who have gone out of their way to do so many special things to make this a better and safer community. And they go out and do that all on their own as well. Safe, fun, family-friendly Halloween celebrations at Northridge Park. They also support Valley Village Courtyard House projects for people with developmental disabilities. Yes, and they have a Wheel to the Sea project, where they bring folks in wheelchairs to outings to the beach so they too can experience the ocean. Just truly phenomenal. Organizing donation drives to give food and clothing, food pantries, serving struggling families throughout the San Fernando Valley. These individuals are truly unique and special. I was proud to sponsor and work with them on our first annual Valley Family Festival at Northridge Park this past year. Not only something, it's not written in the notes here, that they do, but they also have a portable ABC license so we can have beer at the park. And it's pretty cool. So, you can't get these anymore from ABC, and so, we were proud to sponsor, you have to use it at least once a year. So we threw an event just so they can use their beer license, and it was pretty cool. And in fact, that was the idea behind it. But, but we had over 50 community booths, we had hundreds of nonprofit organizations show up, we had an art project, we had all kinds of folks come out, and schools participate on the stage, and kids giving performances, and so it wasn't just about the beer garden. In fact, I don't know that we even sold any beer this year, but we used the permit. And so, they are all very, very special. Today, we celebrate their anniversary and say God bless you for everything you do for us. We love you. Thank you. And then you have somebody that...
No, Mr. Englander, Mr. Englander, Mr. Zine...
Yes, of course.
Wants to say a few words.
Thank you. Congratulations on your birthday, it's a pleasure to see you aging with the rest of us. The flagpoles, I think, are on Ventura Boulevard, because we've posted flags on Ventura Boulevard, so I think the Kiwanis further south have taken your flagpoles. The Valley Village folks are here, I want to acknowledge the Valley Village folks that take care of the people, but the Kiwanis in general, all the wonderful programs you folks do for those in need in the community, it's just phenomenal how much work you do, and I've been involved with different activities that affect residents in my community, and I know my colleagues do the same, but for the history that you folks have, the history of helping people needs to be recognized, and that's a long, long history, and you folks continue with that, volunteerism, participation, so I just want to acknowledge, and the folks here from Valley Village, thank you. I didn't know that you were involved in other activities in addition to the Valley Village, helping people, but that's what the Kiwanis are all about, helping your fellow human being. So congratulations on your anniversary, and congratulations on my colleagues' wonderful birthday. We will be celebrating your birthday in a couple weeks, Mitch, we'll have a good time celebrating your birthday, and there'll be, there'll be a lot of beer where we're going.
And let me recognize, Mr. Zine's birthday's coming up next week as well, August 4th, he'll be 65, and he doesn't look it at all, he holds onto his youth very well.
Well, we will not recognize Mr. Zine on his birthday. It's back to youth.
Great. Well, again, thank you very much. Did somebody want to say a few words as well?
Jim, our president, Jim Loftal?
Yes, please.
I just want to thank the City Council here for honoring us. We don't do what we do for getting awards, we do what we do because we love our community and we want the community to be better. Thank you.
No, thank you again for everything that you do. Let's give them one more round of applause, they surely deserve it.
All right, I'm going to bring you guys to the back. Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead and go this way.
Mr. Clerk, what's left?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to float back from, well, in fact, we'll start off with general public comment. If I could get Mr. Herman, Cheryl Eickley, and again, Ms. Eickley, I apologize, when I left the room, I could have sworn I was telling Mr. Labange how to pronounce your last name, so I appreciate you waiting, but let's have Mr. Herman, Cheryl Eickley, Michael Carrion, followed by Mr. Walsh. followed by Mr. Walsh. So, Mr. Herman.
Residents of Los Angeles, was it a blast yesterday to see how an ordinance ineffectively disrupted this meeting? Why are ordinance important? Because they hold the law. It's black and white, does not discriminate. But I want to read to you, under this motion written by Jose Wezar and E.G. Eric Garcetti for mayor, it states, "Given that in the past few years, a property has been near collapse, a danger to pedestrians, and an impediment to the local community. When did this occur? In January 2005." And today, what are we gonna talk about? I'm talking about, we'd like to see this motion put on the floor so the public can address this issue with you, Mr. Wezar, with you, Mr. Reyes, because this borders your council district. And I'm sure Mr. Garcetti would love to hear public outcry on this subject, when for over eight years, you cannot repair the corridor of Soto for infrastructure that is vital for many to use. So, I say to you now, is there any reason for this motion from 2005 to present to go on like this? And then again, in addition to this, the ordinance on murals, signs, and now I add chalk. It's offensive when the city uses enforcement to restrict people from using chalk on sidewalks and at an event which I would look at as being something passionate for children and families, although it's spurred out of control and caused problems. So, address the ordinance issues, issues that we, the city public, want to address here and now.
Thank you, Mr. Herman Sheryl Eickley, Michael Carrion, and John Walsh. Ms. Eickley, welcome.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Eickley. I live in District 4. I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and I represent myself today. I came to you three weeks ago about the issue of LAPD officers arresting occupiers when they weren't arresting other people for chalking. For example, three or four weeks ago, maybe even longer now because you've been on recess, there was an anti-Walmart protest in Chinatown. There was chalk all over the ground. There were no arrests, and there were no riot gear. The mayor himself and some of the council members were handing out yellow chalk in 2009 when Lance Armstrong came to town. So, this is definitely a selective enforcement issue. I told you about a constitutional ruling, McKinney versus Nielsen, 1995. I told you the city of Orlando spent $200,000 defending a chalking arrest of one occupier. A federal court has since ruled that the city of Orlando cannot make any more chalking arrests. I told you about the U.N. report to Hillary Clinton and how it stated, "Local law enforcement and local governments are violating the rights of occupiers." Not one of you stood up around this horse chute to help. Even yesterday, I asked for help after waiting six hours to speak for two minutes. And the city attorney is declining to prosecute any of these chalking arrests, but the LAPD are punishing people for expressing themselves freely. What I witnessed at Art Walk was police brutality. I saw two police officers take a woman that was smaller than myself, throw her around like a rag doll, slam her face-first into the pavement, body slam her brother into the pavement. What I saw was wrong, and I wanted addressed, and I need to understand from this council, what do I do as a citizen to get it addressed properly? I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrion, followed by John Walsh. Michael.
Welcome. Thank you. I'd like to address something Mr. Reyes stated yesterday, that there were syringes and a lot of other items, paraphernalia found on the property in his district that has weeds that are six feet tall. If it's that bad, he should have had it cleaned a long time ago. And he's more worried about his staff than he is about the kids that play in the area. Shame on Mr... Well, I shouldn't say that. He's leaving office, so he really doesn't care about the city or its constituents, because they're no longer voting for him or paying for his free ride. Call it the way I see it. I told Mr. Reyes a long time ago, if he wants to talk to me, he can, but he sits behind his desk and doesn't do anything about it. So, we're talking about the Soto Street Slope. Mr. Garcetti's name is on this. So, I hope Mr. Garcetti hits with Mr. Buscaino and ask him why this has been here in his chamber for 90 days. 90 days! And they keep putting it off. I asked Mr. Buscaino's gentleman, the young man that picks his nose in the back, if he wanted to speak to me about it, I'd speak to him. He chose just to walk out. So, I'm here again to ask Mr. Buscaino, why is this not in your meeting? You're the one that runs the meeting. I've asked everybody else, and they point the finger right back at you. You're in charge of it. It's your meeting. You decide, okay? Then again, I don't think you know what you're doing. You leave it up to your staff. One of them's picking his nose, so I don't think he knows what he's doing. So, while people's lives are in danger, you guys sit here and laugh, think it's funny. You know? This is not a joke. Mr. Garcetti, I hate to say that my councilman dropped the ball on this. Mr. Wezar let this sit on his desk for eight years, okay? So, I'm gonna say this, Mr. Garcetti, please sit with him, or I'm gonna make this a mayoral issue, okay? We know Jan Perry doesn't care. I hope you do.
Thank you, Michael, 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 thank you. Mr. Walsh, followed by Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, 1 million successful requests a year. You did a great job, Mr. Wesson, yesterday for what, six, seven hours? A couple of others, Tom Labange was up there. You know what a great job is? No one got arrested, and we all got our national media, which is what we were after, okay? So, everyone's happy. I'd like to point out that at 11:00 a.m. today, I'm talking to the 60,000 people who watch this, there will be a Bus Riders Union demonstration, peaceful demonstration on the steps of city council. So, come on down for city council. And incidentally, you heard what I said. What happened yesterday was direct intervention by President Obama through the mayor to twist your arms to vote, to abolish the clinics. Now, you are in violation of state Supreme Court now, and we expect the state Supreme Court to wrap your knuckles. And this is all about Obama's fear that Occupy and the medical marijuana people will gather in Charlotte at the Democratic Convention, get their heads busted, and cost Obama the election the way Chicago demonstrations caused Hubert Humphrey. That's what's happening. Why are people all over the America now, the world, paying attention to what I'm saying? Because what I say is the truth, and everybody knows it. If you want to go HollywoodDems@gmail.com, I will send anybody the email blast with exactly what I said. HollywoodDems@gmail.com. We are getting stronger and stronger. And incidentally, in my last 12 seconds, you have got to enforce the law for motorcycles. They are all disconnected, their mufflers, it's out of control. The noise pollution in this city from motorcycles is insane. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs, and Mr. City Attorney, this is the last general public comment card. I'm gonna, I'm closing general public comment after Mr. Sachs. Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Tomorrow, at the MTA board meeting, they're gonna consider the extension of the measure R. Half-Cent Sales Tax. And it's pretty interesting that with all the discussion they had regarding the projects that they were gonna fund with the half-cent sales tax, that after the fact, they came up with a 30-year extension. So, consider this. That means the half-cent sales tax will go from 2039 to 2069, which means the subway to the sea that Mayor Bradley wanted built will never make it in the 21st century because there'll be no funding. The Green Line to the airport will never make it in the 21st century because there'll be no funding. The Gold Line extension to Downey, to Downey, will never make it because there'll be no funding. You're looking at the Foothill Extension, the Crenshaw Line, the subway... Oh, and by the way, in yesterday's board meeting, Supervisor Yaroslavsky was giving a commendation to Langer's, and he mentioned the Red Line when it was first opened to Alvarado and Wilshire, cost $2 billion. The downtown connector, which is less than half the distance, $1.2 billion. Could have been built for probably a third of the cost, but why do that? We can just pocket that money and build a subway to the Union Station instead of extending it to Mid-Wilshire as it was supposed to be built. But keep in mind, Metro's on top. Go Metro.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. General public comment is now closed. Mr. Labange for an announcement.
This is special introductions, remember. This is a former councilman of the 13th District. He very special, he was down with our seniors, Jim Drummond. Was a senior at John Marshall High. He was a councilman, boy state, one day. And Councilman Roden was the council member at the time, and this is 1946. And also, Jim here was a very special student body president and many other things at John Marshall High. So, the amazing thing, we have a boy state, one-day councilman. Mr. Garcetti, you could have used him if he was in the 13th. Thank you, Mr. President. Please give a little love to Jim Drummond.
Thanks for coming down, Jim, and thanks for all you do. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, does that bring us to item one?
Yes, sir, it does.
Item one?
Item one called special for cards.
Yes, so I want to ask Mr. Walsh to come forward, and Mr. Herman, if you would please come forward. No, John, you don't have to run up here. Something happens to you.
I need the exercise.
Okay.
You know? John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands. Time is money. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Right now, 11:00 a.m., there's gonna be a big demonstration down on the steps. I won't be involved in it, so come. I will be there. HollywoodHighlands.org. I just want to say this is a hearing protest. I think you've done a pretty good job. Go to other cities and take a look at this side street lighting in other cities. It's pitiful. It is pitiful. L.A. does do an excellent job. In California, back east, it's good, but in California, side street lighting is terrible. You do an excellent job on that. Remember, I'm not against everything you do. I'm not one of those old guys who says, "You're a bunch of crooks. If I took over this city, it would be..." I'm not that. I'm not that. That's why the media pays attention to me. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Herman, please come forward.
If there's ever a moment to light up your neighborhood, now would probably be the time to ask the question, why is it only just in Boyle Heights where lights can be out for more than roughly two months? Is it because we have an inactive staff in CD14 who don't respond to our calls, our outcries, our petitions to repair, fix, replace lights that are out? It's a scary day in L.A. when you cannot even replace a light bulb to light up our lives. Final comment, save my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no members on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that should bring us to item six, called special by cards, Mr. Arnold Sachs and Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you're sitting right there, so if you would get up and speak. Mr. Herman, please. Go right ahead.
Mr. Wesson, he does not appear to be talking about this issue.
Now that I have your attention, Dionne, city attorney for Los Angeles, why is it that on this item under CD5, hearing for sidewalk maintenance district, why can't we have the improvements in Boyle Heights, El Sereno, Lincoln Heights, and Eagle Rock for uprooted trees called ficuses that the city has no money to clean up? Shame on the city for the course of action of maintenance that you cannot provide. But yet, your obligations to other business behind closed doors is probably the best interest of yours, the most important. As we have a conversation here, I'll wait.
Mr. Wesson, he is not talking about this.
I know, but I'm gonna give him his time.
So, within my time, now that I have your attention over the conversations that take place when there is no interest to the public for our concerns, once again, sidewalks for Westwood Village, a priority for yourselves, right? But what about the people and your constituencies that live in minority poverty areas? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Please clarify the situation here. I got up to speak on the item. You told the person sitting closest to the mic to speak first. The last meeting before you went on your adjournment...
You're not speaking to the item.
You called me up...
You want to speak on this item, or do you not?
You called me up to speak on the item. Then you said, "Wait, because somebody else will speak first." So, I'm speaking on what this agendized item was. You didn't mention anything, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, he is not speaking about this item.
Mr. Sachs, speak to the item.
Now, my time is running.
Speak to the item. I've told you to do that three times.
No, you only told me once. Again, you have funding, AB 1290 funds made available for sidewalks maintenance, AB 1290 funds for the sidewalks in front of the Broad Museum. I think Mr. Buscaino, one of the last items before the adjournment, was to come up with $250,000 in AB 1290 funds for sidewalk maintenance in his district.
Mr. President, he is not talking about the Westwood Village Sidewalk Maintenance District in CD5.
Arnold, connect directly with the item.
The connect directly with the item is if one councilman can find money from AB 1290 funds for sidewalk maintenance, why these different maintenance districts are necessary? Why not sidewalk maintenance throughout the city? You had at one time $43 million in AB 1290 funds available. How much... But CD5 has other funds available too, it doesn't... But I can't imagine in this conversation...
Thank you. Thank you very much. There are no speakers on the queue on this item. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, I think I want to jump to item 16 at this point in time. It was held special by cards and bring back up to the podium John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org. Mr. Walsh, take your time.
Also emailing at HollywoodDems@gmail.com. Let me show you the secret of how not to be accused of going off the subject. Always begin on the subject, the Buckley School. Later, you go on other issues. You know, all you have to do is know what the rules are to get around the rules. Buckley School is for rich kids. Fine. Rich kids want to go to school? Fine. This actually, this story has been in the media. This is just cleanup that you have here, not at HollywoodHighlands.org, but in the mainstream media. What we're interested in here is tax-exempt loans should only be given to deserving organizations, not the average... A PTA meeting there, the parents come in limousines, in chauffeured limousines. I'm sure that we can find a school somewhere... I'm sure that we can find a school somewhere else in the city of Los Angeles with 4 million people that's more deserving of this than the Buckley School. And notice, nobody from the Buckley School has to get up. Because if you're a rich white person, you don't have to come up here and beg. If you're a minority person and you want your due, do just desserts, if you want anything from here, you got to come, you got to bring people, you got to work the media. This again is for... And I think these people are hooked into Garcetti. But anyway, HollywoodHighlands.org, anybody but Garcetti for mayor.
Mr. Walsh, don't go too far. I'm going to go to your next item next, which is...
No, I'm letting you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Labange.
Members, I call for an i-vote. This is a similar opportunity we give to churches, other institutions, excuse me, to hospitals, other institutions, other schools, in their efforts to enhance the ability to do their job.
Okay, on this item, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, if you'd open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Fourth with, the next item is item 29. And I had a card from Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh is not going to speak on that item, so let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, we're going to go to, I think it's item 13. Item 13, which was called Special by Cards, Oliver Bristow and Mr. Herman, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Oliver Bristow. I'm just concerned because we were not notified ahead of time about what this even means. I'm not really sure what it is that they're trying to do in our community. And it seems like, from what I understand, that they're trying to extend our road and connect it to the lower portion of Avenue 66. I'm not sure if there's some development that's meant to happen, but the assistant of Hweezer's office did not, wasn't aware of anything that was happening. I just want more information, and I don't know how to get it. No one's been able to provide that to us.
Could we get a VAC or somebody from the CLA's office or Mr. Hweezer? Maybe another one of your staff could talk to Mr. Bristow. Mr. Bristow, if you'd go over there by the rope, I'll find someone that will speak to you.
Okay, I am opposed to whatever... If they're trying to extend that road, I am opposed to that.
Well, I'll try to at least get you the answer as to what's going on.
Thank you very much. So just step over here?
Yes, so Michael, Michael By, if we could find someone that would help answer this gentleman's question, maybe a VAC because he knows everything, or someone from Mr. Hweezer's district. The next speaker is Mr. Herman. We're on item 13.
We're going to pass this up to the next item.
Okay, Mr. Herman passes. No members on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next, that brings us to item 14, called Special by Cards, Mr. Arnold Sacks and Mr. Herman. Mr. Sacks, if you could please come forward.
Just thank you again. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. The Building and Safety Department reports and confirmation of lien for nuisance abatement costs and our noncompliance of code violations. I'm just wondering, would that also include properties that are foreclosed upon? I believe there was a story in the LA Times regarding the problem with foreclosed properties and why liens haven't been issued against the foreclosed properties. I also believe that the city council enacted an ordinance requiring fines of $1,000 a day against banks that let foreclosed properties become public nuisances. So I'm wondering why the city, or the department, or who, which exactly what department would be, would issue citations against the foreclosed properties so that the city can start collecting on $1,000 a day? And who exactly would they issue the citations to? On these cases, you have addresses listed that, well, not... That get a lien put against them, an amount put against them. Will we in the future see a list of foreclosed properties with a tick, a ticking, I guess for lack of better, a ticking watch that says, oh, you owe $1,000 a day? $1,000 a day? That could add up to be some money. And since the city's financial situation is so rosy, maybe they doesn't necessarily need the money per se, but they could donate it to the county.
Thank you.
Council members, this morning, for public testimony, I spoke before the Bureau of Sanitation, Foreign Building Safety, and I also made it public testimony to the city attorney in that department. And I said, why is it that Building and Safety Department does not proceed to pursue within their fee charges for violations? Why is it so difficult for members of our council district not to know what an OTC is? And today, some of you will learn what an OTC is, order to comply. If we enforce an order to comply, that means Building and Safety will do their job rather than make excuses that they start from the top of their priorities versus their stacks of complaints. So Steve Sacks, Arnold Sacks, I'm sorry, is right. What is the city attorney going to do to reduce the loss of homes in our community and cause vacant lots to exist when your enforcement does not succeed in the way the laws interpret under Building and Safety? For today, I demand that an investigation through ethics commissions, if you're listening, pursue an investigation on our behalf with the process of Building and Safety Department. Also, regulate the Los Angeles administration here at City Hall to be in compliance in the standards in which they must abide by and restrict these long wasted times for people to respond.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Parks, are you ready to move with 17?
Yes, I just moved that we approved the committee report. It's been circulated along with the attachments.
Mr. Clerk, there are no cards on that item, is it?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us to where?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 30, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sacks, if you could come forward. And Mr. Walsh called it special as well. Mr. Walsh is not here. Oh, Mr. Sacks, I've been informed that you have one minute remaining.
No, 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 I'm sorry, sir. I should have two minutes remaining. I spoke on two items.
Are we sure?
I spoke on two items.
He has how many minutes, how much time? One minute, Mr. Sacks. Go right ahead.
What time are we given to speak now?
One, one minute, I'm told by the clerk. You're, one minute, I'm told by the clerk. Okay, Mr. Sacks, you're going to forfeit your time, your one minute that you have left. You, you... Okay, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Sacks, do you want to speak? Do you want to speak to this item or not? Then speak to this item. If you say anything again that doesn't relate to it, your time is done. The timekeepers say you have one minute. So you have one minute to speak on this item. You don't have, you have, you have no time. You have no time as of now. Okay, so on this item, Mr. Garcetti, you have disrupted this meeting. Mr. Garcetti.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, we just passed Council, I mean, file number 29, which I was going to speak on too, but I will address 30. Both of these motions. Appreciate also folks that are here from Film LA and from the film community on both of these. And thank you, Mr. Corin and others who have seconded these. We had these two film-related motions building on the work that we've been doing for the last decade here to make this a more film-friendly place, and the great partners out around this horseshoe, Mr. Alacon and others who have helped us achieve that. We have today two different motions. The first, which we just passed 29, which relates to this one, instructs the CLA and CAO with the Office of Finance to look at our city's taxing system for radio and television broadcasting industries. A few years ago, I authored basically a new ceiling at $300,000 for creative professionals and to be also looking at ways that we could reduce the gross receipts tax paid by companies that are filming here. This would expand that to the broadcasting arena. We've worked with MPAA, our Motion Picture Association of America, to look at that in both radio and film. But here on 30, colleagues, I wanted to call this special because it's kind of an exciting initiative, to see if we can make, we've seen a lot of our production leave Los Angeles. And actually, Paul, do you mind coming forward from Film LA real quick because I think this is important for all of us to know about? We've seen the large blockbuster films leave Los Angeles. A lot of that is because the state, while it's acted to put in a tax credit that is at the median level, you can come to the table, has unfortunately not taken the heat of many of us to go even further for our big, big films. But television has been a bright spot here in Los Angeles. But television pilots this past year, we saw a number of them lost to New York City. In fact, we had entire networks who did only one-hour drama pilots in New York and not here or outside of Los Angeles. So this initiative would look at trying to see whether we could make it free to film a pilot in Los Angeles, to waive all of our city fees. And in doing so, have a better chance of those pilots, if they get picked up, staying here in LA, a small amount of money that could have a huge payoff for the city of LA. So, Paul, could you just inform folks, obviously whether or not you support this, but secondly, you know, what the landscape looks like for TV pilot production in the city of Los Angeles and what we might be able to do to continue making LA a more film-friendly place and land some of these shows here?
Certainly. We've seen a major decline in many categories of filming, but certainly we had owned the pilot broadcast area for years because it was close to home and they all filmed here. We've gone down now from, over the years, from about 80% of filming down to 60s in recent years, and this year, down into the low 40% of all pilots made for the United States.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, can you ask folks to reduce their conversations? It's difficult to hear our expert at the table here.
So we're down for the first time ever in the range of about 42% of all the pilots made for television, which is not only frightening, it's abysmal for the center of television to be in this kind of position. And we do continue to hear the mayor of New York saying that he is going to be the center of film and television production in this century. Unfortunately, the statistics are bearing that out as California continues not to compete well for the business. Every opportunity that the industry has to make it easier and less expensive to film, in particular pilots, will be something that's beneficial to the film community and to our community for jobs and employment. And I believe you are correct that often, when they begin and pilot in a location, they return to that location for the series.
Mm-hmm. Great. Well, thank you. Well, colleagues, we are going to get a report back of just how much money the city charges in these fees. But again, if we were going to do something surgical and something that could have a big payoff, I think it is this. So I want to thank the film community for coming together and working with us, location scouts and others who have suggested some of this work, and I ask for your support today. We'll get the report back and then see if this is something that we can enact in our future council meetings. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Next on the queue is Councilman Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Garcetti, thank you so much. This is finding ways to make this city more business-friendly is something that we all ought to do and look at the different industries across the city. And I'm tired of hearing that, you know, New York wants to be the entertainment capital of the world. Not going to happen. We are here in Los Angeles, in Hollywood. We need to be the entertainment capital of the world. And to find these incentives, these tax breaks for the Hollywood industry is something that we need to continue to drive and something that I will continue to support and stand with my colleagues to make that happen. So I want to stand and make it clear that I support this and getting this report back from the committee. And also want to recognize Mr. Garcetti for his ongoing efforts in making the city a more business-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Buscagno. We have Councilman Corin next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I want to speak to the importance of this measure and thank Mr. Garcetti for bringing it forward. We've made great strides in combating runaway production, both in California and in Los Angeles. We've made, we've started to engage in this battle, finally. And we're still, there's still many areas that we are losing in, but at least we're engaging. And when I was in the legislature and authored the Film and Television Production Tax Incentive, half-billion-dollar incentive for the film and television industry, it worked and it brought jobs back. But one of the areas of that incentive that was sort of glaringly missing because of just the affordability of it was network television, which got no help at all. And it only applied to direct-to-cable distribution television shows. So we still are, we still have much work to do in that area to protect one of Southern California's heritage industries. We are really the, have long been known as the home of television production. We must always be. And I think this is an important step to take in a targeted way at an area, as Mr. Garcetti has said, that will be very impactful for relatively little cost. And so I think it's an important step that we move forward aggressively on, and I ask for your i-vote.
Thank you, Councilman. We have Councilman Labange next, please. Councilman Labange.
Thank you very much, Film LA. It's so important. Anytime I see here, I see the sheep coming up and where Rick Arloff is, that's where Jack Nicholson's sitting and looking back as they made Chinatown many, many years ago. And City Hall used to be absolutely a place for filming, but that has noticed reduced greatly. I had a great conversation once with Henry Fonda right outside that door, which was special. And our rotunda's filmed more than any other rotunda in the world. That beyond set, we have to take off our jackets and roll up our sleeves and really fight for this because other cities are fighting for it. Film LA has transformed and done a better job. The previous administration never wanted to be at the convention center when they had all the, they said, well, we don't need to be there. They had their nose up in the air. You got to get out and fight, and you got to sell LA. And someone who sells and respects LA is Joe Solis from Wreck-It Parks. Joe, stand up and also with you.
Mark Harbin.
Mark Harbin, who handled all the permits. The most permitted location is 4730 Crystal Springs, correct?
Yes.
Griffith Park has more film. It was once said by, I think, Abe Stein, I think, a rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it in Griffith Park. And with the respect of the park and the work that is being done there, we thank the park services. Anything you do, I see Chief Storms is here. You're here on this issue too, chief? So if you want to add anything, you can. Mr. President, thank you very much. I know how much you support filming as well. It keeps Los Angeles working.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And members, we're going to have a group of members that have to leave, so if you could please make your comments brief, Mr. Alacon, and then Mr. Garcetti to close. Or...
I'm up. Who's up? Me. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I will never look at Rick Arloff the same again. I will always see a twinkle of Jack Nicholson in his eye. The Sacramento has, particularly Northern California representatives have a tough time understanding tax incentives for the film industry. And here you have Mr. Corin, myself, several other former legislators, Eric Garcetti, essentially liberal Democrats, who are saying tax credits for this particular industry are the way to go in California. It's a vital industry to California. And in all of the council, yes, all of the council members do support this tax credit notion, and we've applied it to different businesses. But I'm wondering how... But I'm wondering how we can improve our documentation or our message so that we can sell that idea with much more confidence up in Sacramento? Because quite frankly, many of the folks in Sacramento view this as a tax giveaway to large corporations when in fact it's a job creator, which is very consistent with the message that we hear coming out of Sacramento. So with this irony in place, I'm wondering how we can tighten our message, how we can demonstrate that tax credits absolutely will generate more tax revenue downstream?
Well, very briefly, there are two things going on. One is we have now two independent studies that show for every dollar given, governments in California are getting more back than they're giving away, which is unusual in incentive programs. And the second is we've been working with studios and commercial producers and others to give actual dollars spent in the northern communities so that the film liaisons up in the northern part of the state now have data to show their representatives and senators the impact it's having on Northern California as well. And I'm hoping that'll sway some of the minds up there.
So when you're saying "we," you're talking about some coalition up and down the state of California?
Well, we right now being Film LA and the Flix, but we're coordinating a lot of that activity effort through Film Works. Flix is the film liaisons in California, all the commissions and film representatives. But we're coordinating that through Film Works, which is the marketing campaign initiated and inspired out of this council.
Okay, well, I obviously support this endeavor and thank Mr. Garcetti for continuing to advance this message. It is something that is vital to Los Angeles. There isn't a community in Los Angeles that doesn't have film workers in their neighborhood. And we have to recognize that this is an industry that is absolutely vital to Los Angeles, not only in the sense of creating jobs, but in the sense of creating quality jobs with good benefits that enable people to maintain quality of lives that are emblematic of the communities of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti to close.
Thank you all very much, colleagues. And thank you so much, Paul, and everybody. And I know departments are here. We're looking at finding those numbers. We had some initial, I guess, estimates in the 300,000-ish range, but we will make sure that we're not just saying absorb it. We know that everybody's in tough budget times. But we'll find that money. I think it's just like the car tax that Mr. Englander authored and had me co-author with him. We only needed five car dealerships to return to make up for all the lost business tax. And that happened already. We already have five that are coming. And everything else is going to be above that. So we will work closely with the CAO and departments to find out what this amount is. And if I could have this back by October 10th, if that is a good date, and also for the previous one that just passed, if we can have those both in committee on October 10th. Let's get this ready in time for pilot season and let's make it happen. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So members, prepare to vote on this. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now we move to Item 33. Mr. Clerk, I believe that was called special by cards, but the time has expired. So on that, Item 33, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Now, Mr. Clerk, that leaves us with only closed session items. Sergeants, if you could please clear the council chambers? Thank you.
The City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks is proud to announce the LA Kids 2012 Free Soccer Camp. The camp runs July 17th through August 10th and is for boys and girls aged 7 through 14. Campers will receive free lunch, quality instruction, and swimming. Space is limited and campers will be registered on a first come, first served basis. For more information, please call 213-485-4841. The City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks is proud to announce the LA Kids 2012 Free Soccer Camp. The camp runs July 17th through August 10th and is for boys and girls aged 7 through 14. Campers will receive free lunch, quality instruction, and swimming. Space is limited and campers will be registered on a first come, first served basis. For more information, please call 213-485-4841.
If I could get the clerk to read that?
In the case entitled Damian Ramirez versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $477,590 and $46 cents plus accrued interest at the rate of 7 percent on judgment portion only in settlement.
No speakers on the Q on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. What was that, Madam City Clerk? Everybody rise for adjourning motions.
Counsel members, I rise to adjourn in memory of Alejandro Gallardo, who was born on April 8, 1981, and passed away unexpectedly on July 6 at the young age of 31 years old. He was the father of a new baby boy, Jordan Alexander Gallardo, who was born this year on January 19. Alejandro was extremely proud to be a new father and was looking forward to protecting and guiding his young son's life. He was a window tinter and was known to be a hard worker, worked for four different window tinting companies, and owned his own business in window tinting called Creative Window Tinting that had been established and licensed in Orange County. He loved to tint cars, commercial buildings, malls, stores, churches, and homes, and most recently, he worked on tinting the Tarzana Hospital. Alejandro's family remembers him as a young man who was always trying to help anyone in need, always available to talk to friends and family who needed a kind ear, and he was a great listener and advisor. He enjoyed playing baseball and golf. He was a father, fiance, a son, brother, new uncle, cousin, and friend. The cause of his death is still unknown. He was visiting with his mother. He stayed half-time down the street from me. He lived five houses down from my house, and resided with his fiance and her family and their baby. And then, he was in the Whittier area with his mom because he worked in that area, and so he would stay there some days. And his mom and him were watching TV. His mother stepped away to go to the restroom, and when she came back, he was on the floor, So, this is a very sad and unexpected death, and the coroner is still looking at it to figure out what happened. His future father-in-law is a city employee, John Ponse, who works in street services in the Public Works Department, but he's also a very dear friend of mine who grew up in North Hollywood and went to high school with me. The family is deeply saddened, as you might imagine. We did attend the services last Saturday. Of course, the services were also on Friday. He was interned at San Fernando Mission Cemetery, and although he resided half-time and his mother was in Whittier, they buried him at San Fernando Mission Cemetery so that he could be close to his son, which is five minutes away, and so that his son will have a memory of who his father was. He was the love of my friend John's daughter, Adriana. He was the love of her life. She was only 24, she is only 24, and so you can imagine how devastating this has been But they wanted to send a message, and it is simply this: Death leaves a heartache no one can heal, but love leaves a memory that no one can steal. Alejandro will be truly missed. May he rest in peace. He is also survived by his fiance, as I said, his seven-month-old son, Jordan, his mother, Cecilia, his brother Juan, and a nephew, and many, many friends who I had the opportunity to join with at the memorial activities.
And remember, yesterday I said that all of the adjourning motions will have all members, unless a member requests that they not be on it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I rise to adjourn in memory of Ted Kaczynski, who passed away peacefully on Friday, June 1, 2012. During his 30-year tenure in the merchant marine industry, Ted sailed all licensed engineer In 1983, he moved from New Jersey to California, where he began the Branch Agent District Number One of the Marine Engineers Beneficial Association National Maritime Union in Wilmington. In 1986, Ted became president of the American Merchant Marine Veterans Memorial Committee, Incorporated, which erected the first national memorial to the American Merchant Marine located at the Port of Los Angeles in San Pedro. The memorial was dedicated on National Maritime Day on May 22, 1989. Four years later, the Memorial Wall of Honor was dedicated. At this occasion, in 1993, he was honored by the Los Angeles City Council for service to the community by having the street adjacent to the memorial named officially as Ted Kaczynski He leaves behind his five children, Andrea, Ted Jr., Matthew, Janice, and Nancy, 11 grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. In lieu of flowers, donations can be made to the Merchant Marine Veterans Memorial. May he rest in peace, Ted Kaczynski.
Okay, Mr. Parks, I think, and anyone else?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask to readjourn in memory of Anthony R. Gonzalez. Anthony was born in Los Angeles, California, on August 6, 1983, to Tony Gonzalez and Denise Mittel. He lost his battle to leukemia on July 23, 2012. He was only 28 years of age. Survived by his father, Tony, his mother, Denise, his sister Saxony, and a host of relatives and friends. Funeral services will be held for Anthony at St. Andrews Church in Pasadena, California on Friday, July 28 at 11:00 a.m. He will be missed and cherished by all.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that the council adjourn today in memory of a friend and former colleague of many of us who worked in Sacramento. Sad to say that Dave Howard, the political director of the California Association of Realtors, passed away at the young age of 62, just three weeks after he was diagnosed with lung cancer. He passed away on Saturday. Those of us who worked in the Capitol had great opportunity to work with Dave, who helped for the last decade shape the American dream for so many people in California as the leading voice of the California Association of Realtors there. Before...
Okay, now we're back in open session. We are now on item... City Attorney, we're on item 35. And I would like to defer to the... Does some announcement have to be made where it relates to the discussion we just had?
No, sir. Not for 34.
Okay, so we'll just go immediately to item 35 then, right? Okay, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair of Budget and Finance, what is your recommendation on 35?
My recommendation is to approve the City Attorney's request for payment. This is a matter that was tried by a jury. A judgment was entered, and I would move that we approve payment of the judgment.
If I could get the clerk to read that?
In the case entitled Damian Ramirez versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $477,590.46 plus accrued interest at the rate of 7% on judgment portion only in settlement.
Thank you. No speakers on the Q on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Fourth with... Any more business before this committee? This council, rather.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, members. Mr. Garcetti?
The City Attorney... I mean, sorry. The City Clerk has informed me when I added October 10 to number 29 and number 30, we'd already voted on number 29. If we could reconsider and put that in the record, that the report back is October 10, please.
Can we do that without a vote?
I asked him. He said we just had to reconsider for two seconds.
So on that item, let's vote to reconsider it. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that item is now before us.
We'll amend it to have the report back October 10 from the CIO. Thank you.
Okay, do you have the amendment, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Announcements. Announcements.
Ten ayes.
What was that, Madam City Clerk?
Ten ayes.
Okay. Everybody rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Alacón.
Councilmembers, I rise to adjourn in memory of Alejandro Gallardo, who was born on April 8, 1981, and passed away unexpectedly on July 6 at the young age of 31 years old. He was the father of a new baby boy, Jordan Alexander Gallardo, who was born this year on January 19. Alejandro was extremely proud to be a new father and was looking forward to protecting and guiding his young son's life. He was a window tinter and was known to be a hard worker. Worked for four different window tinting companies and owned his own business in window tinting called Creative Window Tinting that had been established and licensed in Orange County. He loved to tint cars, commercial buildings, malls, stores, churches, and homes. Most recently, he worked on tinting the Tarzana Hospital. Alejandro's family remembers him as a young man who was always trying to help anyone in need, always available to talk to friends and family who needed a kind ear, and he was a great listener and advisor. He enjoyed playing baseball and golf. He was a father, fiance, a son, brother, new uncle, cousin, and friend. The cause of his death is still unknown. He was visiting with his mother. He stayed half-time down the street from me. He lived five houses down from my house. And resided with his fiance and her family and their baby. And then he was in the Whittier area with his mom because he worked in that area. And so he would stay there some days. And his mom and him were watching TV. His mother stepped away to go to the restroom, and when she came back, he was on the floor, dead. So this is a very sad and unexpected death, and the coroner is still looking at it to figure out what happened. His future father-in-law is a city employee, John Ponse, who works in street services in the Public Works Department. But he's also a very dear friend of mine who grew up in North Hollywood and went to high school with me. The family is deeply saddened, as you might imagine. We did attend the services last Saturday. Of course, the services were also on Friday. He was interned at San Fernando Mission Cemetery. And although he resided half-time and his mother was in Whittier, they buried him at San Fernando Mission Cemetery so that he could be close to his son, which is five minutes away, and so that his son will have a memory of who his father was. He was the love of my friend John's daughter, Adriana. He was the love of her life. She was only 24... She is only 24, and so you can imagine how devastating this has been to her. But they wanted to send a message, and it is simply this: Death leaves a heartache no one can heal, but love leaves a memory that no one can steal. Alejandro will be truly missed. May he rest in peace. He is also survived by his fiance, as I said, his seven-month-old son, Jordan, his mother, Cecilia, his brother Juan, and a nephew, and many, many friends who I had the opportunity to join with at the memorial activities. Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno. And remember, yesterday I said that all of the adjourning motions will have all members, unless a member requests that they not be on it. Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I rise to adjourn in memory of Ted Kaczynski, who passed away peacefully on Friday, June 1, 2012. During his 30-year tenure in the merchant marine industry, Ted sailed all licensed engineer positions. In 1983, he moved from New Jersey to California, where he became the Branch Agent District Number One of the Marine Engineers Beneficial Association National Maritime Union in Wilmington. In 1986, Ted became president of the American Merchant Marine Veterans Memorial Committee, Incorporated, which erected the first national memorial to the American Merchant Marine located at the Port of Los Angeles in San Pedro. The memorial was dedicated on National Maritime Day in May 22, 1989. Four years later, the Memorial Wall of Honor was dedicated. At this occasion in 1993, he was honored by the Los Angeles City Council for service to the community by having the street adjacent to the memorial named officially as Ted Kaczynski Way. He leaves behind his five children, Andrea, Ted Jr., Matthew, Janice, and Nancy, 11 grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. In lieu of flowers, donations can be made to the Merchant Marine Veterans Memorial. May he rest in peace. Ted Kaczynski. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Parks, I think. And anyone else?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask to readjourn in memory of Anthony R. Gonzalez. Anthony was born in Los Angeles, California on August 6, 1983, to Tony Gonzalez and Denise Middle. He lost his battle to leukemia on July 23, 2012. He was only 28 years of age. He survived by his father, Tony, his mother, Denise, his sister Saxony, and a host of relatives and friends. Funeral services will be held for Anthony at St. Andrews Church in Pasadena, California on Friday, July 28 at 11:00 a.m. He will be missed and cherished by all.
Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that the council adjourn today in memory of a friend and former colleague of many of us who worked in Sacramento. Sad to say that Dave Howard, the political director of the California Association of Realtors, passed away at the young age of 62, just three weeks after he was diagnosed with lung cancer. He passed away on Saturday. Those of us who worked in the Capitol had great opportunity to work with Dave, who helped for the last decade shape the American dream for so many people in California as the leading voice of the California Association of Realtors there. Before he served with the Realtors, Dave worked for the California Association of Health Plans and AARP. He served on the National Advisory Council of UC Berkeley's Institute of Governmental Studies, and in so many other ways was a very important, strong voice for the business community in California, for homeowners, and for the Realtors, of course. And his loss is a great one and a sad and shocking one for many of us. So he's survived by his wife, Deborah, and many family and friends. I know that all of us wish them our sincere condolences, and may Dave Howard rest in peace.
I'd like to sign on that one with you. I didn't know. That's like a sucker punch. I came within an eyelash of doing some work with him when I was out of the legislature, and then this opportunity came up. I used to play golf with him on a regular basis because he was much worse than I was. So I could beat him legitimately. God, he was not only great at what he did, he was a fantastic, good person to be around. Jeez, I didn't know. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Members, I ask to adjourn in memory of Jim Scott, who was a cousin of my staffer Sharon Shapiro. Jim was a loving husband. He was survived by his wife, Susan, and their children, Sean and Lisa. Ask to adjourn in memory of a good man, Jim Scott.
Anymore? Okay, members, this meeting is adjourned.